The one of the leaseholder groups that I spoke to were given notice of an increase in their service charge from two and a half thousand pounds a year to thirty eight thousand pounds a year. So the the impact this is having on people in our city is just is is just it's eye watering and it's unbearable. And and then the other issue that's alongside that is that the government have set a limit on supporting. And there's not enough money to support them, by the way, the replacement of cladding at eighteen metres. So if a building is eighteen metres or higher with cladding that needs to be replaced or external wall insulation that needs to be replaced. Then they can at least apply to the Building Safety Fund. They may not get it, get enough. But if it's below that, they get nothing. So Royal Key has five blocks out of seven which are under eighteen metres. They've got exactly the same external wall insulation. It is as much a fire risk as the as blocks five and six are as the other five blocks are. And yet they are not eligible to apply for any funding from the government whatsoever. That could cost those leaseholders in those five blocks something in the region of fifteen million pounds to to replace that. So the these are significant issues that, you know, the government is is completely ignored. I've written to the minister today. We should support some of the other things we're doing with the with the MPs and Liverpool Cladiators to draw his attent- his attention to this. And I can speak a little bit more about it later on when there's the the ISAM cladding. The only other thing which I think is really important to say is that since writing this because of the that the planning inspector made a change, suggested change, inserted a change into our draft local plan. When he came to have a look at it in October, November last year, which is very helpful to us. And basically, it's clause H ten and basically what it says is that any family dwelling cannot be converted for use as a house of multioccupation. And in essence, that means that when those houses come to the council for planning permission, it's in our gift now whether we decide to grant that, whether we grant that or not. And as a result of that, the and we've been working with planning to do this for, you know, for a few weeks now. Is they've rejected all the applications for house of multioccupation that are coming. And I think that is a great achievement for us, you know, to do. If the Article Four direction is successful, and hopefully it is, our plan is that we can brew, we can bring something to Cabinet on the fifth of March. That will bring the Article Four direction directly straight away into council policy. And then the 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 planning, that article, that paragraph phrasing in our local plan, which has material consideration, will also apply to any homes of multioccupation for people for four, with four people in and above. At the moment, it will apply to those seven people and above. And that will have a significant impact on wards like Pickton, Tewbrooke, and other and other wards in the city that have been blighted by the growth of homes of houses of multioccupation. So I just wanted to add a bit of detail to those things in addition to my report, Chair. You're on mute, Tony.
Sorry about that. Thank you for that, Barry. I've got councillor Cadia. Do you want to ask a question of councillor Kushner?
Yeah, thanks very much, Chair. Thank you councillor Kushner for that update. Really great news firstly on the HMO issue. I know impact on, as you said, a lot of wards, Pickton, Central, Kensington, Fairfield, Tewbrooke. And Pickton is is one of, I would say, the hardest hit currently. And it's good to to hear that the Article Four is in consultation. And once we get that, we can kind of bring into in line with the the other under four HMO. My question is, what happens to those who are currently under the radar running these HMOs? And once Article Four comes in, all they will do is they will apply for a licence. Obviously, as they apply for a licence, it doesn't really give councillors and residents a lot of power in terms of objecting to them. It falls more on the applicant to prove that they wear HMOs previously. I know that this is another loophole that a lot of developers will be exploiting. What have we got in place to make sure that we are not giving them an easy option to just go through that? So what legal powers are we looking at? What can we do to to mitigate that? Because I know that is definitely the next thing. And I know this because I speak to councillors in Green Bank who have Article Four. But again, their biggest problem is this applying for licensing. So that's my first question. The second question is in relation to the housing and building, our ambition to build more houses. We've been given the rights for about three years now to build council houses. Yet we haven't really significantly built to the level that I and you would probably expect. What measures and what policies, what direction are you going to be putting in place to make sure that we start proactively building and getting the, opening the revenue accounts as well? Because again, that's one of the things that we're waiting for and it seems to be just taking slightly longer. Now, taking all that into consideration, what we're asking for, how does that impact on your decisions on this plan in terms of the over, the capacity of the department, the housing department? Because I know that they're already overstretched through financial budgetary savings in the past. I know that they've got a lot more to deal with in terms of the Covid side as well. So all offices are really stretched. How do you see the 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 department developing? And and what is going to be happening in terms of the capacity, in terms of the capability in in that department? So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Barry, do you want to answer that first and then I'll bring in councillor Amelia, then councillor Ned, and then councillor May. Everybody's had a hand up. But anyway, if you could answer those questions first, Barry, that would be.
So start with the the certificate of lawfulness. So my understanding, because we had an issue with this last week over in in Anfield. I think when, you know, as long as we, if we implement the Article Four direction and they haven't made an application before, then we can stop that. That doesn't apply. So we can, as I'm aware, I think we've got a problem with existing HMOs. And I think we have to deal with those in a different way. And I think that is, I I think there's going to be a slump in their market. Because the the houses aren't going to be worth what they bought them for, because they're not going to be, there's not, there's going to be a reduction. They're bought as businesses and not houses. So, you know, and so they're buying, a lot of the developers are buying them well over what the market price would be. So if we're now clamping down and saying, you know, you cannot, it's up to us, we'll decide whether a house can be an HMO or not, it's up to us now, or will be. Then that will have an impact on the value of those properties. And I think that we need to be in a position to be able to buy them, should they come to market, so that we can pick them off one by one and reduce them. And I think we have to do what we're doing in Pickton, which is ramp up our enforcement around refuse, collection, parking, those kind of issues, so that we can just make it much more, much more difficult. But that's within the powers that we've got. That's what we, you know, that's what we can do. The council housing is that we're, so we've got drafted a housing capital programme, which which is worth around three hundred and fifty million pounds for to build two thousand one hundred houses. And a good portion of those will be council houses. And that capital programme has got to be agreed through Cabinet, which is what is going through over the next sort of week or so, so that we can bring that to, so we can bring the housing capital programme to Cabinet. Certainly, hopefully, but well, I was hoping by the end of March, but certainly in the very beginning of, sorry, at the end of February, but hopefully within the beginning of March. And that's put our marker down. And of course, when we start building on Denford Road, that's the start of it. In terms of staffing, we've had, the combined authority gave Liverpool, as it did, or the local authorities, two hundred thousand pounds to spend on regen, supporting regeneration. So when I came into position, the proposal was to use that for consultants to look in district centres and sort of something on the waterfront. And for me, I don't want to do that. I don't want to take on consultants. We need staff. And we need staff that are focused towards supporting the neighbourhood planning and neighbourhood development. And I'm expecting a proposal to come back to me on Tuesday for for staff. And there's a possibility of doing something similar. I've spoken to councillor Gladon about this in, for the county district centre, because there's the potential to get staff, to employ staff to help with that neighbourhood planning there, that will help us with that capacity. And I think what they need to do is build projects to a point where they can be, they can attract predevelopment funding, so that within a year, we can pick their funding up, so their positions are secure. And then we can take up some people behind them. And that is how we've got to build the capacity within the team.
Thank you, Barry. Councillor Amelia, have you got a question for Barry?
Yeah, it's been touched on a little bit. So, thank you, Barry. I'm pleased to see that there's council housing listed as a priority and a lot of positive work included, such as Healthy Homes Act. In your report, you've mentioned the housing capital programme and that the Cabinet report has been redrafted to plan two thousand one hundred new homes led by the council. How many of these will be council housing at social rent? And I know you've answered, responded to other questions that the report is going to Cabinet. Is it part of the housing strategy that would be brought to this committee? And if it isn't, could that, could that also be brought to committee to look at? On low carbon homes as well, you've mentioned that there's only thirteen Trustmark registered installers for new green homes measures in the Liverpool City Region. So we know how many of those are in Liverpool?
Okay, so I can't tell you exactly how many of the two thousand one hundred of those will be council houses for social rent. But if we're building houses part of a wider development, then the intention for that is for the majority of those to be council houses. But what I'll say to you is this, that whatever, we're not, I don't want to see a concentration of council housing in any one area of the city. So every development that we will be involved with will have a proportion of council housing, at least twenty to twenty five percent, whether it's in the festival gardens or whether it's in Stonebridge Cross. And that and and that will be a commitment right across the city. We're building the houses that were started in Denford Road, which I think, I think Chair, I think that's one hundred and ten houses altogether?
Hundred and five.
Hundred and five. Fifty of those are going to be built by us and they will be council houses. So that gives you a statement of our intent. And as these schemes are detailed and come out, the, you know, the priority's got to be is social housing, but it's got to be spread right across the city. Low carbon, I don't know how many of those in Liverpool. When I've had a look myself, it's difficult to tell because although they're listed on the Trustmark site, a lot of the, the phones don't, don't work and one thing and another. But what I can tell you is that we've got, we were awarded one point three eight million pounds for the city regions, a half a million for Liverpool in the first round of this retrofit for installation of green energy efficiency measures. And we're about to receive, I think, estimated to be around, what, three point one million from the second phase imminently from from the combined authority. So that's about four, four and a half million pounds that we've got to retrofit houses. So it's around up to ten thousand pounds per house. So it's around four hundred and fifty houses. So we've got our Healthy Homes team have already got a plan for the first fifty. And then they're working up a plan, because we had a meeting last week about it, to, so that we're ready for when this money comes in in April, so that we can have all these four hundred and fifty houses done by the end of September, which is challenging because of the time scale and the few numbers of installers. But we've already been speaking to installers and they, you know, we've got Andrew, Andrew Rooney, who runs that department, is is just a bundle of of energy and she's got it to where it is now. And, you know, we're quite confident that that will, will be able to do that.
Thanks, Barry. Councillor Ned?
Thanks, Chair. On the reports on the Stonebridge Cross, I wonder if it would be possible for you to report regarding the Parkham Morrison standard of housing within the city that we can maybe introduce again. And I think everybody who knows anything about Parkham Morrison standard, it's a standard where we've got to do bedrooms so long so far. We've got to make sure bathrooms are there, toilets are there, things like that. I'm not saying to implement it. I'm asking that you put that, within the Stonebridge Cross report. And let's have a look at the difference of way houses are getting built now, the sizes, and what it can be achieved if we put the Parkham Morrison standard back into our house building programme, especially the council properties. The other point is, I think I've raised this before, and get more concerned again now, is when we build bungalows and we're starting up building one bedroom bungalows. And it's always been a thing with me in the past that we build two bedroom bungalows, because as people are getting older, you need people to stay with them. You need some of the family to stay on a three, two, one night a week or whatever. And I I believe if you just have one bedroom, then there's no privacy there. And I know it's been raised in the past that maybe we could have a pulled down bed or something like that. Now, to be honest with you, as you're getting older, or even when you're staying with your parents, you want privacy. And I honestly believe that we should be looking at two bedroom bungalows rather than one bedroom bungalow as I've just described. And finally, I think it's a mistake, I'm sorry, but where you've got the groupings will include Croxteth Councils. Does that mean it should have said Croxteth and Norris Green Councils? Thanks, Chair.
Okay, okay. Sorry, I think because it's a, it's a major Croxteth development, it should be at this stage initially, the Croxteth councillors. And it can open up, it's got an impact on your Norris Green or the wards, I think that can, you know, that that could, that could extend to that. The Parker Morris, I fully support that. And I think that one of the things that we've, we got from the Foundation, Foundation Homes was a really comprehensive, brilliant design package for for housing. And I think that should incorporate, and I'm sure it does, I'll check on that with Louise Davis when she's back from 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 leave. But that that will include the Parker Morris standard. I feel that I completely, utterly and support, support what you're saying. And that will be part and appendix to our housing strategy. So that will set our standard for the design of homes. So I fully support that. I'm happy for that to come back to, you know, to this committee to, to have a look at you together with the housing strategy. And in terms of the building, the extra rooms, yeah, I, yeah, I think that, I think I would agree with that. There's also a lot of developments of extra care homes being planned across the city as well, which will have additional sleepover space for for people who, family members if they, if they need it as well. But yeah, I I don't, just, I don't disagree with that. I think that's, I I don't disagree with that. I think that's a good idea.
Okay. Thanks for that, Barry. I've got councillor Lee, have you got a question for Barry?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Chair. Well, I've got to say, I couldn't believe my ears when councillor Kushner brought that fabulous news about the restrictions on the development of family homes into HMO. The most squalid conditions that people in HMOs find themselves in are always in the smallest properties. To to an extent, and begrudgingly, you can accept when a very large dwelling, a very multi-room dwelling becomes an HMO, sometimes it's almost inevitable. And some of them, in fact, can be, can be done up to quite high standards. But in the case of small family homes, it's very, very rarely the case. So, Barry, I've got to say, I'm absolutely delighted to hear that. And my, it's news that we've been waiting very anxiously for. And so my question, because I have a question in two parts. The first part is about the lead time for all of that. I know the consultation period has been set back for a number of reasons. But it's great news that you're bringing us there. And it'd be great to hear that all of this can be brought about in a, in a, in a quick time. The second part of my question is to do with, we're talking very positively about building houses. And that is, of course, very, very welcome. But I wanted to ask a question as to whether this council would ever view clearances again as they did in the long distant past. Because some of the the streets and roads in our, in our very old terraced house neighbourhoods are becoming to a point where they can no longer be renovated to a living standard. Would the council ever view clearances in the future as they did in the past? And I suppose most recently, I'm thinking about the Boot Estate, which was cleared for what is now a very, you know, a very attractive estate. Some of the streets and areas in our old terraced house areas really need clearing now. They've been done up too many times. Thank you.
Okay, so the, you can answer your first question. If the Article Four direction consultation is positive, and it's looking good at the moment, then we will bring a Cabinet report on the fifth of March to bring it into policy within the council. So, and that will be from the fifth of March. Then that's our policy that will also apply to houses for people with four people in and above. So that's the first thing. I think the second thing is just to reflect on what you said about conversion of properties, the smaller ones and larger ones. I think the point is here for me is that the decision about whether a property should get planning permission to be converted should be a decision that we take and our communities take. If it's a decent, and that should be dependent on whether the quality is right, whether the type of property is correct, whether it fits within the local community. And I think we can make those decisions when the Article Four direction, hopefully all being well, comes in. But that moves it, that moves that power to us to make those decisions. And I think that's really fundamental. And that's a fundamental change. In terms of clearance, I suppose there are streets in in the city that clearly, you know, you wouldn't build houses like that anymore. And there are some in, obviously, again, in Pickton, there are some streets that are, you know, two up, two down and overcrowded. And, I mean, you took the example of of the Boot Estate in Norris Green. And I, but I will guarantee the people of the city this, that if we do do clearances like that, we will not be moving people away from their community without offering them the opportunity of living back in. It's not as Richard Kemp did back in twelve, fifteen, twenty years ago, which is absolute, the word, one of the worst, outside of Hillsborough, one of the worst injustices to our city, certainly over the last twenty or thirty years. So I guarantee that that won't happen. But where those situations might be, and Stonebridge, the Stone Dale Estate might be another one, we'll do it in a sensitive way that, so that we can, so that we don't upset people, create anxiety and give people that proper opportunity to move, you know, to move into another property if they want to. So in principle, yes, but it's how it's done. And we know from the Lib Dems and from Richard Kemp how not to do it.
Okay. Thanks, Barry. I've got councillor Sarah Doyle.
Hi, everyone. Also apologies for my late joining. I was having technical difficulties, Chair. And I just wanted to add into the discussion on clearances. And I agree with the points that Barry has made. It's about how it's done. And I know we're going to go on to have a presentation about the community lead in housing. But I think if we're talking about clearances and changing an area in such a distinctive way, we should be looking at maybe, you know, supporting community land trusts. So it's the communities that come together and say what we are going to do with that land. If it's a clearance or if it's a different point, the council should be supporting them on that. That it should be, you know, an up-down rather than a top-down approach.
Yeah, I, again, I agree with that. And, you know, we've, we've put community-led housing and, you know, you've helped with this. And Paul has to get that into our, into our housing strategy. And I'm, I think that's a good option for us, particularly with some of the, some of the smaller sites. So I've asked for, because I know the Land Commission is, I think, producing a report, so I've asked for, we just, we, when my, my last Cabinet briefing last week was to go back to the combined authority and ask them where they're up to with that and how we can designate land, so that it's, so that it's appropriate, ready for that. And I think it's right, you know, that we should try. And there are a couple of organisations that have, that have, that have approached me that are interested in in community-led housing. And it's a, it's definitely an option and one that we should, that I'm completely open to. And we should help and facilitate that where we can.
Thank you. Councillor Gladon?
Hi, I hope you can hear me. I'm having trouble actually with technicalities. Can you hear me okay? Okay. Regarding decant status, what you need, we've always, we've always done throughout the twenty, thirty years that I've been involved in housing in Liverpool, we've always given priority on new build schemes to people that already exist within that area. It's not difficult to do. And to be honest, if you do actually need to clear an air, it's the only way to do it. You know, people live within communities. The biggest disaster we ever had in this city was moving people out to Kirby and Nosley and all over the place. That broke up communities that had lived together for years. So it has to be a priority that we allow a decant status to get people to get back within their own community. That's me done.
Yeah, I I agree with that. So Chair, and I think the key to it is, is, is making, bringing communities with you and so that they're part, you know, part of the planning and they've got the confidence in us and the trust to know that the decisions that we'll make will, you know, will benefit them. And again, as I said before, you know, we've learnt the lessons of, of the, of the, of the Boot Estate. And, you know, we won't be making mistakes like that.
Thanks, Barry. I've got councillor Kushner now. Go on. Can you hear me? Yeah. Do you want to ask Barry a question? Go on. I think she's going to go upstairs, she says.
She's going to, she's going to share my, sure. Funny, these protocols, aren't they, with virtual meetings?
Yeah, sorry, sorry about that. We're already on the scene. Oh, yeah. I just wanted to make a statement more than than a comment, just because Croxteth has been mentioned more than once in the past twenty minutes. So, so just to, just to make people in Croxteth feel like, of course, I'm out of breath now because I've just run up the stairs. Of course, of course, if we're going to talk about community housing, then it's going to come from them. So just, just that, basically.
I don't know if that was a question, Barry. I think it was just a statement, wasn't it? I think that really was. I don't see any other members' hands up. I mean, councillor May, did you have your hand up earlier? Would you like to ask a question or so?
No. I think that, I think that was a mistake. Sorry, I didn't mean to. I didn't intend to ask a question, but.
Okay, thank you. I mean, Barry, I mean, that was really, I think, a very good session there, where a lot of questions and a lot of areas were covered, I think. One of the issues I've got, I think I've spoken to you before about this, is in relation to, obviously, after the pandemic and with all the sort of movement away from retail, but there's going to be a lot of, you know, like big department stores and other warehouses, you know, empty. And one of the things that worries me is that, you know, that permitted development rights have been extended, you know, and they're not subject to planning permission. So that's a worry for me and I think a worry for many of the members of our committee, that we could actually have the haven sort of slums of the future, you know. And really, I mean, we need to make sure that, as you said, that we really democratise, you know, how we use land. I mean, that was the purpose of the Planning Act all them years ago, wasn't it? So obviously, it's something that we need to go to keep an eye on, yeah?
Yeah, I agree. And I think, you know, if we, if we can extend the the sort of neighbourhood approach to to housing ward by ward, then right across the city with the involvement of members and community and stakeholders. And I think that, that's probably the best way we can move forward to make, to make sure that that, you know, that that doesn't happen. Because of course, that is a risk.
Okay, thanks, thanks, Barry. Can I move that? We, thank. Uh, can I move that, the, uh, thank councillor Kushner for his updates and for all the information that is put before the committee and we know that, is that agreed?
Agreed, thank you Barry.
Okay. We can move on now to item four on the agenda. And can I invite Paul Kelly from Liverpool City Region Community Led Housing Hub to give a presentation in relation to community-led housing? Paul? He hasn't disappeared, has he?
I saw him disappear, just zapped off the screen.
Am I back? Can you hear me?
Oh yeah, yeah.
Thank you Chair. Really pleased to be here. Um, Vicky's got my presentation, I think she was going to share it with the committee.
Are you ready for me to share it now than Paul?
Yeah, if that's okay, Vicky, thanks. And sorry, I was having technical difficulties this end getting the presentation, so I appreciate Vicky's support. Um, yeah, so my name's Paul Kelly, I'm the director of the, um, what we're now going to call Breaking Ground, which is the Liverpool City Region Community Led Housing Hub. And just as Vicky's setting up the presentation, to give you some context, um, we are one of five hubs that have been set up across the country, supported by Power to Change and the Community Led Homes Partnership nationally, um, to provide advice and guidance, uh, within five regions across the country to support community-led housing to grow. And it's very much part of a national growing picture, um, covering all parts of the country really, about how communities are taking back control of, of their housing. Um, so we have, and we've just had one year's funding initially from Power to Change. I started in post in April this year and we are just about to secure two further years, um, funding to try and establish the hub and get it embedded. So if we flick on the slide please, Vicky. Um, so I'm just going to talk about what community-led housing is all about, just so everybody understands what we're talking about. And then talk about the history and types of models of community-led housing in the UK, because it's quite, quite diverse. And then talk about how that links into the Liverpool City Region context and how local authorities and yourselves can help. And again, I, I really appreciate being here tonight, it's really important, thank you. So if we move on, Vicky. Um, so just in terms of what community-led housing is, um, community-led housing is about involving local people to play a leading and lasting role in solving their housing problems, creating genuinely affordable homes in stronger communities. And community-led housing covers not-for-profit housing, it's about creating long-term community ownership and stewardship of housing within neighbourhoods and, and across local people. It's about affordability to local people. It creates meaningful community engagement and has huge benefits to a community. And particularly in Liverpool and up north, community-led housing movements very much embrace wider, um, community wealth building approaches and community business approaches. So it's about housing, but it's also about more, and particularly Liverpool is about more. So if you click on, Vicky, thank you. Um, and in terms of the National Community Led Homes Partnership, three criteria must be met to make a community-led housing project in, as part of the definition. Firstly, there needs to be open and meaningful community participation and consent throughout the development of a community-led housing scheme. Secondly, the community group or organisation should own, manage or steward homes in whichever way they decide to, because there are options around that. And thirdly, the housing development that they deliver must be of true benefit for the local community, which might be a specific group of people, an intentional community or both. And these should be legally be protected in perpetuity. So it's really about, I really liked the phrase I heard before, democratising how we use land and buildings, that's what this is all about. So if we move on, Vicky. So there are a number of different types of models, some you might be aware of, some not so. And some are about providing homes for individuals themselves or their group, and some are about providing homes for the community. So in terms of individuals, we've got self-build or collective custom build housing, we have self-help housing, cooperative housing, which is very strong here in Liverpool historically. We have co-housing schemes which are starting to emerge more and more nationally and mutual home ownership schemes. And then in terms of providing homes for your community, we have community land trusts emerging and developing, and we have a number now in Liverpool. We have community-based housing associations and we have arms houses. So if we pass on, Vicky. And these are about benefiting, whatever these projects deliver, they're about creating benefits for the whole community. It's about long-term investment coming into a neighbourhood because of ownership of local assets. It's about delivery of genuinely affordable homes for local people, activating local public support for new homes and engaging people in planning processes and in the community in the longer term. It's about creating something that fits to a place, that it's not about creating something off a developer's pattern book, it's about creating something very bespoke to a neighbourhood. It's about increasing housing supply and then unlocking smaller or more difficult sites and bringing neglected buildings back into use. And also quite fundamentally, there's a real chance through community-led housing schemes to innovate and to build high, to high environmental standards. And we know housing is really contributing to, um, some of the environmental difficulties. So there's a real opportunity here through these type of projects. Click on, Vicky, please. So I'm just going to go through some of the key types, community land trust housing cooperatives, co-housing and self-help housing. So if we click on, Vicky. So community land trusts emerged in the sixties in America, very much from the civil rights movement. Um, and the first CLT in the UK was actually set up in Scotland in ninety-three. And since that time, there have now been two hundred and fifty community land trusts set up across the country. And currently in Liverpool, we have three and we, we've got actually more growing as well. So if we click on. So community land trusts are about organisations that are set up by community members with an open membership. They're not profit-driven and they are about acquiring land which remains in the ownership, in the stewardship of the community into the long term. So community land trusts are about long-term connectivity and ownership in, into the future. Community land trusts are very much driven by providing affordable housing, but that affordable housing that remains in the overall stewardship of the community. And that is usually locked into the legal governance structures of the land trust so that they can't be passed on to private developers or sold to other housing providers. It's about the community maintaining their ownership. If we click on, Vicky. And just to give you a, a living example of that, and I was involved in the establishing Home Bait Community Land Trust in Anfield, um, uh, eight or so, nine or so years ago. But this is a classic example of what a community land trust can do or the aspirations of what it can do. This block and the bakery that was there in Anfield, people will be aware, was run by a family who were struggling to maintain it. And the community felt that actually if they had a vehicle to run something, to, to contribute to the regeneration of that area, they could come up with solutions that fit with the community. And we wanted to, the community wanted to save the bakery as a community asset rather than have it demolished and maybe a Tesco Express or something go back in. And over the last eight years, the community land trust has nurtured the Home Bait Bakery, which is now employing twenty-two local people and is very profitable and successful. Um, we are renting out the property above the bakery as, um, a, uh, for local people. And we're about to develop the terrace alongside it with, um, for eight new houses and three new community business spaces, all owned by the community land trust, that's the intention. And the idea is there that we can, we can be really flexible, for instance, around the rent for the Home Bait Bakery, because we're not in it for profit, we're in it to make the bakery succeed. So we can ebb and flow with the, particularly during Covid, we've been able to be really flexible about how that works, because the community is about supporting the community to grow and develop rather than make profit. Um, so it's a really important project and a really good example of how we can do, we should be doing more of this. If we click on, Vicky. Um, so moving on to housing cooperatives, people will know Liverpool led the way in the seventies and eighties. The revolution of housing co-ops in this city was the biggest movement nationally outside Glasgow in terms of the development of housing co-ops. So we have lots of those. And that's where cooperatives are run, but they're not for profit and they're run by the people who live in those houses and they're owned and maintained by them. So if we click on from that one. Um, and there's a book recently that came out that I would urge you to get hold of a copy by Matt Thompson from the Heseltine Institute, did a book about the hidden history of collective alternatives of housing in Liverpool that really goes into detail on the housing cooperative movement. But we've also got new ones emerging like Persons Unknown, which is a group of, like, younger people in, in LA who are wanting to build some houses for themselves, really dynamic, um, energised group of people who want to, you know, create affordable housing for themselves in the city, uh, which is fantastic. So if we move on. Another slight variation of the cooperative model which is emerging and growing now is about mutual home ownership, where a group of people might come together that have a bit of equity or a bit of ability to get a mortgage and they collectively own some properties. And they're able, and it's very much driven about keeping rents low so that people can be part of a mutual home ownership society, um, and collectively support each other to have an equity in their homes. So this is a growing model nationally and there's a couple of projects emerging in Liverpool, which is really interesting. If we click on. And then another model that's emerging increasingly is co-housing, which came from Denmark in the early seventies, but it's becoming more and more popular here in the UK. Um, there are now nineteen schemes in the UK, but this is where people want to live a bit more collectively with shared values, um, and want to live in a co-housing development. If we click on. They're usually very small groups of people come together, the maximum is usually about forty households. And there's a very famous project in London that had a lot of press called the Older Women's Co-Housing Scheme, which built forty properties in London for a group of women who wanted to downsize and retire from their bigger houses, but actually live collaboratively together. Um, some of them own their properties, some of them rent their properties, but it's about a collective coming together to support each other. And there's usually, um, community facilities within a co-housing development. If we click on. And then the last big group that's gaining ground nationally is around self-help housing. This is often very northern, northern focused, particularly in Leeds, there's some great projects, um, Canopy and Gyroscope in Leeds, two housing charities that work with homeless young people and vulnerable people to renovate abandoned buildings, um, and to link skills, skill development and maybe working with homeless people into developing abandoned properties. So that's a growing movement too, that, um, is a model that we'd be keen to kind of try and promote more in our region. If we click on. So in terms of our housing context, you don't need me to tell you this, you're all on it, I can, I can see that. But, you know, we've got an increasing population projected, an aging population who want, maybe have different choices with their housing. Affordability is a key issue, we, we're all aware of that, I won't go into that. And also this notion of community, of communities of interest is growing. So whether it's older people or the LGBTQ community or whoever, wanting to look at different ways of developing their housing. There's also a real disparity across the, the city, as we know, some high value areas, some low value areas. So how do we, how do we bring, um, ambition and, um, innovation into neighbourhoods that maybe have low value? I think that's really important. And as you, you have been talking about the whole issue around poor quality housing in some areas, um, is something that needs to be challenged. Innovation around environmental standards is really important and community ownership, I think, could help deliver that. Um, yeah, so I'll leave that one there, if we click on. So Breaking Ground, what are we? Well, we have decided we're going to be a very light-touch organisation. Our aim is to go out into the community and to be promoting the opportunities of all these models across the region, so that key community groups operating across the city understand the potential that they have, um, to, to look at developing some of these models. And interestingly, since I started working in April, and these are figures for across the region, but we originally had about sixteen projects in the pipeline, we now have thirty-one groups across the Liverpool City Region looking to develop projects and a growing interest in this. So, um, that's what the hub is here to do. And we are looking to support groups to develop their projects and get them moving, particularly by providing accredited, skilled advisors who can support groups on their journey, who can provide the capacity building, support and development and help groups secure funding and develop their plans, get them to planning permission and get them moving. Um, so that's something that we are going to offer as a service. We are looking to partner with the local authorities and housing associations in the area. And fundamentally, the aim here is Liver- Liverpool germinated some of these great ideas. Some other cities have kind of taken the lead, particularly places like Bristol where they've really adopted this as an approach that they want to have in their DNA of their city. And what we feel very strongly, all these community groups is Liverpool's, Liverpool's the national leader for this, let's not listen to anyone else, Liverpool's the national leader for this. And we want to get ourselves back in, into that position. So if we click on, Vicky. So what can local authorities do? Well firstly, it's about supporting and embracing community-led housing as part of your housing strategies. I talked about Bristol, they've incorporated it within their housing strategy, um, community-led housing as part of the flavour of other solutions, that we're a small part of this, but can be an important part of this. We want you to support the hub, we want you to lobby the Combined Authority in Homes England to support the hub. And what we're trying to establish, as they've done in Bristol and London through the mayors there, is both a fund of money that supports the revenue support for groups to develop and then capital funding to kickstart their housing projects. So that's something we'll be announcing shortly, some, some information on what we would like to achieve here. We talked, I know Barry was talking about before, land disposal policies. Bristol have just, um, gone through a process, their first, where they identified thirteen pieces of land that were just going to be, um, tendered out to community-led groups to develop. And they're just going through that process now, so it's very interesting. Um, and the other thing I want, I would request from you as well, and I had a meeting with Kim Johnson last week, the MP, and she was saying to me, the key link in all this is councillors. You know your areas, you know your patches, you know what the, is going on in your neighbourhoods. And that link in for the hub into communities, I think, is where you can really help as well. And that is already happening and I really appreciate that great support that people are giving, uh, the hub, um, because we can then work with groups and look at these ideas and develop. And our ultimate aim is to look at five percent of all homes being developed in this city by twenty thirty as being community-led projects. So just to the last slide, I think it is. So we are launching Breaking Ground as part of a festival that starts on the twentieth of February. Um, there's a whole range of different groups coming to talk about their individual projects, so it should be an opportunity to inspire and ask questions and, and learn from other groups. And there are all sorts of interesting projects out there. Um, and we're also putting a spotlight on some of the Liverpool and our region's projects as well, to get some national profile, which is fantastic. Um, so I really appreciate being able to talk today, I hope some of that made sense. Um, uh, and yeah, ask me any questions you've got. Thank you.
Great Paul, thanks for that. I mean, it was a really, I thought, a comprehensive presentation and if I can ask Vicky to send out the slides, you know, to members so that they can sort of, they go through them again, I think that would be helpful. Yeah, I think it was really thought-provoking. Do members have any questions? I've got councillor Ned first and then councillor Amelia.
Yes, thanks Chair. Paul, really exciting, really good project that looks like it could look forward, waiting to the long saga. One of the things I think was missing a bit though, was regarding the, uh, job creation in, in the, in respect of when the, when the projects come to life. I'd like to see more of how many jobs that could be created, especially for young people into apprenticeships. You know, I mean, I remember that long time ago when we done the state's action rate. You know, I mean, I remember that long time ago when we done the state's action where we were in the city, Queen's Road area in particular, where I was and what a councillor for. And one of the things we done there was actually got young people to start doing apprenticeships to build the walls, to build. By doing that, they had respect for the community that we lived in, because they were helping to build the community. So I'd like to see a little bit maybe of that, put it into your, um, your slides if you like. Thanks.
Okay, Paul, do you want to respond to that yet?
Yeah, I, I couldn't agree more and maybe I didn't bring that out. Um, it was interesting, one of the young people from Anfield, Bradley, who is now on the board of Homebaked, came, got involved in the development of the flat above the bakery as a, a young person in school. And through that process, he's actually now, he's actually training to be an architect in London at the central school, in St Martin's in London. He's on the board of Homebaked still and, and the idea is he's gonna come back and become an architect in this city. And that's all through the inspiration of being hands-on involved in Homebaked. So you're absolutely right and maybe that is, and we will draw it out in, in future presentations. Because that is very much at the heart of what these projects are about.
Thank you. Councillor Amelia.
Yeah, um, thank you for your, for your presentation, Paul. I think it was a really, really good presentation, it was genuinely really positive. And you said about, you know, the housing being genuinely affordable. How would you assess what is affordable? Because obviously, we know that people have got different incomes and obviously because of COVID, there's been more impact on it. So how would we ensure that it's actually affordable? Because obviously we know that there's the affordable. And on meaningful community participation, how would you ensure that community groups or organisations are engaging with the wider community? Obviously, you know, there's, there's different scenarios, there's ones where it's just the raw members, but where it's wider engagement. And lastly, um, who are the accredited skills advisors for community-led housing hub? Um, sorry, one more. Um, obviously as councillors, we'd want, like, we'd wanna be involved and support, like, the development of community-led housing. How do we ensure that we do so, like, in an open and transparent way, so that we're avoiding any potential conflicts and interests?
Yeah, thanks for that. Um, I think I've got, I think I might have missed one. So affordability, I think this is a big debate and discussion in, in this whole movement. Um, in terms of, um, you know, that it, it has to be generally affordable and linked to salaries within local neighbourhoods and mean salaries. And um, community-led housing models have opportunities to be very flexible around how they look at rent pooling. And that's something that Homebaked and Granby Four Streets and other models are looking at. How, um, and they're very much driven by that, you know. Persons Unknown, who I mentioned before, their, their starting point is what they can afford to pay. And then they build their project around that. And partly also what we, you know, in the good old days when you used to be able to get eighty percent of grant for housing, those days have gone. But actually, so it's about how you can be flexible and build different models into this approach. And Homebaked again is gonna be launching a community share offer this year, which is about different ways of, of, of getting investment. So that's where it starts from. It's about mean incomes in an area and what people are living on and how everything is provided around that, if that makes sense. The other thing is about membership. These organisations are about being truly driven by community members and being truly open. And the community has the opportunity to become members, so in these, in these structures and models. So a Homebaked Community Land Trust is an open membership for people living in the area of definition. Um, and they, uh, the job of the hub is to try and increase and support those organisations to make sure their governance truly reflects the, the community that they're sat within and not becoming a clique of a few people um, being involved. So there's a lot of support we can give around that. Um, the other question was it about the open and transparency?
Yeah, so there was, there was two questions. So the first one about the, of the last two was, who are the accredited skilled advisors for community-led housing hub? And then the last one was about how, as councillors, we'd obviously wanna be involved and support the development of community-led housing. But how would we ensure that we're doing so that in an open and transparent way and that we're avoiding any conflict and interests?
Yeah, the first one, the community-led housing advisors. So as part of the support to this programme through government funding, um, the Confederation of Cooperative Housing have devised a nationally accredited training programme for advisors and it's an eight-day course followed by an accreditation process. Um, that came about mainly um, in response to, you know, in last waves of, of housing regeneration, sort of ten, fifteen years ago. A lot of consultants, so if we look at things like tenant management organisations, a lot of consultants made a lot of money of setting up tenant management organisations across the country, many of whom have failed. Um, because there was no checks and balances on that quality of advice. So this course has been put in place and only trained advisors we will um, ha- uh, connect with groups to work with. We currently have eight trained advisors in Liverpool and part of, um, and I'm one of them. So I've got a, a group of eight and their information will be on the website when we launch later this month. Um, but we're also every year looking at, we want to train up local community members to be advisors. So that's the approach we're taking on that. Um, and we want to train about thirty a year in the city so that we're building that pool of, of skills. In terms of the open and transparent process, I think for me, it's about um, one, one of the key drivers for this potentially could be community organisations that you work with in your, in your neighbourhoods. And I think it's very much about an introductory connectivity into those groups. And then, um, and I already have had some of those connections made by different councils already. But then I pick up the baton and the team at the hub and we start those conversations. And I think it's just about making sure everybody knows about those opportunities. A big part of this hub is gonna be about sharing the knowledge and making it really open and so that people know about it, if that makes sense. So it's not just about the select few, it's about everybody getting the, the information. Was that helpful?
Yeah, thank you, Paul.
Okay, there.
Thank you, Chair, and uh, thank you, uh, Paul for a really great presentation and uh, really um, look forward to seeing some of these great projects in communities. Um, my questions are, one is, you see, the council sometimes will have the same ambition and goal uh, in some certain um, sites. That conflict of interest between the land trust and the council, how would you resolve that? And how would you think that at the council we should prioritise? Um, and, and look at? Um, the second one is about uh, communities. Um, most of the communities that would be, as I'd say, easy pickings and very engaging are those which are, have got the ability, have got the expertise, have got individuals within their community that can reach out. What can be done or what can you do in terms of uh, engaging with the hard-to-reach communities? Um, of which I represent a big uh, portion of, of, of it in, in our ward where um, it is difficult for even the council to reach into their communities, for someone else to come in and, and try to guide them through. Um, what, what have you got in plan? And how can uh, you really make sure that whenever developments happen, that they don't get forgotten about? So the big portion comes to the, those who shout louder.
Great questions, great questions. Um, so the first one, um, I think in terms of the council and, and it's something I've already am experiencing, I suppose, is this is about, um, this is about us being part of the housing strategy in, in the region. It's not about one, uh, um, we are the solution. It's about we can be a small but maybe innovative part of this. And it's about us working in collaboration with the council to look at where is best to, to develop these top sort of projects. Because we know there's, you know, what you were talking about before, about developing council housing and that whole energy that's emerging around that is really exciting. You know, I'm somebody that's worked in housing for a long time in this city and it feels like we're kind of moving into a different place. And this is about supplementing and enhancing that programme through a process of um, uh, collaboration and it's trying to remove some of this issue of struggle and kind of one, you know, Homebaked when it started was a little bit outside and a little bit pushing. And actually, this is about being part of the whole picture, about making better housing for our city, because that's what's needed. So I think that's the first thing, it's about how we work with the council, um, staff, yourselves to determine, well, where is land that maybe we're not gonna develop, but you, you might want to take on board and, and work collaboratively around that. The second question is about, um, firstly, one of the things I believe very passionately about is we need to inspire communities to see the possibilities and I agree very much with what you say. Um, it's been quite interesting being part of the national movement. A lot of this is, particularly down south, has been driven by massive issues around affordability and it, there's quite, there's some really edgy projects happening where people are building their own houses and um, working in very small groups to collaborate and set up housing associations and stuff like that. And part of how we get to hard-to-reach groups is to really inspire by, I mean, we're in a very difficult time with COVID, but once this is over or starts to be over, to actually get out and, and be connecting in. But also connecting with some of those key organisations who might be working with homeless young people or people with drug and alcohol problems or whatever the issue is and collaborating with some, some of those agencies. And we are already having some of those conversations. In Bootle, we're working with a group who want to develop a project for homeless young women, maybe collaboratively, maybe as a cooperative. So it's about getting in through those routes. And again, that's where I think you'll be able to help very much with that.
Okay, well, councillor Doyle.
There we are. Hi, thanks, Chair. Um, I love the presentation, Paul, and I'm really happy you could come along. I just wanted to give members an insight into the way we're going, going to be doing community-led housing in part of my ward and overlapping into Princess Park, because it might give an insight into how you sow those seeds and how it gets growing. So I approached Paul a few months ago and was like, I think, I'm a big believer in community-led housing. I think things should be done by the community for the community. But as you said, Abdul, it's about how do we do it where it's not the same people that are maybe getting involved, how it's tapping into people in the community that had maybe not, never thought of community-led housing, but know they want to change their local area. Um, and I just put leaflets out when, when it was safe to do so, put leaflets out. I've tapped into mainly our youth organisations in the ward, because I think it's something that we should be discussing with young people. Um, I know one of our youth organisations and a community group, the Flori, are now looking at potential community-led housing. And I think it's about taking the focal point, changing it a bit for our community organisations and saying, well, you could, you saw, you support our community in a great way. Have you thought of branching into this? Or have you thought about talking to the people that use your services, whether it's for food or emotional support or for welfare support? Speaking to these people about would they want to be involved in a community-led housing project? Um, and we've got one that we're working with on the moment at a certain site and Barry has been really helpful as well. With sort of saying, you know, if you as councillors look at the land in your ward and think, well, it's just become a dumping ground and nothing's really happening with it, feed that back to us and we will see what we can do. Um, I know also next Friday, one, uh, an activist within Princess Park and Riverside, Sonia Bassi, she has organised a meeting that is just like a public meeting for anyone who lives in L eight. And hopefully we'll get a good turnout because it's been broadcasted across like loads of platforms. But we're just asking people to come to this meeting and if you're interested in community-led housing, let's do something about it. You don't have to have any links with doing it before. But even if you're just someone that, you know, regularly complains about bins or fly tipping or come to it because it is a step towards improving the wider community.
Okay, thanks for that, Chair. Okay, yeah. Yeah, that was really useful information, I think, yeah. So um, can I now bring in councillor Lee?
Yeah, thank, thank, thank you, Chair. Paul, that, I, I think that was excellent, mate, really good. And, and, and I will certainly be taking some time to, to read through that again because some of the ideas and some of the models and the, um, the, the housing models there were, were really interesting. I, 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 I'm gonna ask a really straightforward question now. I hope it's, it, it, you know, forgive my ignorance and it might be a little bit dim. But where does the money come from? Where, how does a group who are face timers in terms of, you know, because that's, that's what this is about? Where do they get the money from? Is this, is, is this grant-led? Uh, are you saying that they pull their own money? Are you giving them money? There's gotta be money from somewhere because buying even a small parcel of land to build on is, you know, a, 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 a very high cost. Renovating property, high cost. Where does the money come from, Paul?
Great question, great question. I think, I, I think you're right, none of this can happen without, without cash. Uh, and, and even in these strange times and difficult times, there's a lot of money out there, there's a lot of money around. Um, up until uh, March of last year, the government, the government had created a community housing fund through the housing grant process. Um, and it was quite significant sums of money and that groups were able to come together, get revenue funding to get them organised, set themselves up as a, a legal entity, if you like. And then they were able to apply for pre-feasibility money to look at the detail of um, a project and then apply for grants through Homes England. What we do, um, that fund has, was closed, but actually the, the government just at the weekend announced um, a very small pot of money into next financial year, just for revenue. So um, four million pounds has been put on the table. We are gonna make sure Liverpool groups are applying for that, um, most definitely. Uh, we've got a number lot already lined up and um, we're hoping that because the government's in a one-year cycle, through the spending review later this year, that the community housing fund will be renewed. Um, so that's where the first big chunk of money comes from. It's also about setting up new legal entities that can loan, um, uh, loan money. The community share offer I talked about in Anfield is about different approaches to drawing in money to top up those schemes. The scheme that Homebaked is looking to develop in Anfield is a very, very innovative, high standard environmentally, incredibly pushing the boundaries around that. So it is quite expensive, but there are a lot of investors out there who are interested in testing out new models of doing things. Um, and we have the expertise to put together a business plan for groups, whichever model they wanna do, to, to enable them to happen. There's a great group I, I, I talked about, two, there's a group of six people in Brighton who've built their own homes from scratch. Um, the six of them, they've set up a cooperative. They've actually just registered to be a housing association so that they can draw down grant from Homes England. Just because they need to build affordable housing in Brighton. They're a bit left field, they're a bit, you know, uh, a crazy group, but actually they, with support, they're working the system for their benefit, for their group. Um, and that's what we, we're here to do, to, to build those financial packages.
Okay, Paul, thanks for that. I'm gonna ask Barry now, this will be, I think, the last question, I think. I mean, it's been a really great presentation and some excellent contributions and questions from members of the committee. So if I can ask Barry there, if you'd like to, if you, you can ask your questions and maybe wind, wind this session up. And we'll move on, so Barry.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. Paul, that was great and um, I know you're coming to our forwards meetings to do something similar there, which would be great. Uh, I, I totally support this and, and, and I've had, you know, a few conversations with, with Sarah about it because she's got a real passion for community-led housing and um, I, I think, I, 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 I think I, for me, the role of the council in this is to facilitate, um, to, to help facilitate these kind of developments. And I think we can facilitate it through land in supporting groups to get access to funding through, um, through Homes England. Uh, and help sort of forging partnerships perhaps with other housing associations to access affordable grant where, you know, you, when, that we, where we can. Um, and I'm also- And I'm also support, you know, ward members and, you know, people should use, you know, take Sarah's example, you know, that, that the, I would encourage ward members, you know, across the city to look at, you know, if there's bits of parcels of land or problematic buildings, then, you know, let's have a look at it together. And I, you know, we can provide some information, you know, about whether that land is, you know, is available or not. I'm, I'm interested in what you said about Bristol and I think, but, you know, I think I've just emailed Lee Kinder, who's the head of our property asset management service because we've got an inquiry about, you've been talking to the Florrie as an example, about how we do this. And I think how we use the combined authority as well to provide support for it. But totally, you know, totally supportive of it and I think the engagement of the community is all, all of that is absolutely right. So, yeah, great. Thanks, Paul. And thanks Chair for the comment.
Thanks, Barry. Again, Paul, can I just thank you on behalf of the committee for an excellent presentation? Obviously, you've raised many issues and many thought-provoking sort of ways forward. And so I'm sure that we'll be in touch again. And I think by the response of members, obviously, it's something that we really will welcome and support. So again, thank you for, for coming and you're quite welcome to stay if you want to. But if you need to go, we understand. But thanks again. And can I just, from the members, we, we thank Paul and we, we note the report. Thank you. Is that agreed? Great. Okay, can we move on then? Item five, it's the impact of Covid nineteen on the housing market. And can I invite Darren Hardy to give us an update, please? Darren?
Thank you, Chair. How do you follow that presentation with something as dry and boring as this? Chair, I normally do a written report on, on this and I've done for the past few meetings. And when I started doing the written report this time, I realised that I was just rewriting the report that I gave you last time. Because in reality, for, for a variety of reasons, the, the impact of Covid on the housing market is almost identical to what it was three months ago. The, the housing market continues to grow nationally and locally. That growth has slowed slightly, but only slightly. Prices are still rising, demand is still up. There are still trends suggesting that people are moving away from urban areas and looking for larger homes in more rural or certainly less urban areas than was, was the case. The London housing market in particular has had some impact with a sense of people moving away from London in the South East with the expectation, we think, that the working patterns that have been established during Covid will continue. Whether that will be the case or not, we genuinely don't know. I'm, I'm pleased to say, Chair, that the, that we are still in the position where there has been no large scale evictions taking place. That is largely because the, the measures that were put into place once the courts reopened have continued to slow the eviction process and made it more difficult for landlords to evict. But also quite simply, the courts are backed up. And we wouldn't expect to see any real evictions starting to take place for maybe another two, three, four months. Unless there's, there's, there's significant change in the ability of courts to, to process. But we've also got no indicators necessarily that landlords aren't necessarily looking to evict. I think one of the things that, that happened, if you go back to two thousand and ten, and there was, there was an expectation then that because of the credit crash, there would, there would be large scale evictions. That didn't necessarily happen in the way that people thought it would do. Because one of the things that landlords became aware of was that if they were evicting somebody, there wasn't necessarily a housing market out there that was full of people waiting to take on their tenancy. So that did slow, I think, some of those potential issues. I have to say, Chair, I'm, I'm being positive on that, but it could be that we're almost just waiting through the chute to drop. And that will get further into this year and may well find that those levels of evictions do start to rise. But we are keeping a close eye on it. And like we did last time, if, if that starts to move significantly in one direction or another, then obviously we'll let the committee know and try and take some corrective action. We are still working on the basis of trying to get everybody who was homeless during the Covid crisis into permanent housing and property pool is still partially suspended on that basis. And we're taking a report to Cabinet this Friday to extend that till March. But we've made massive steps in terms of getting the majority of people who were homeless into permanent housing. Obviously, given the client group I've talked about, that can be quite difficult in some cases and find the right home and make sure those people are settled. But I think it's something that we as council, in terms of progress we've made, should be massively proud of. And the fourth and final thing, Chair, is, again, I think I touched on this in the last report, there does, I think, remain an issue that not necessarily because of Covid, but because of Brexit. Now, we may see house building and housing renewal start to slow down because of pragmatic reasons. So we, we know that, that there's already been cost hikes in prices of goods that are imported from the EU. That's on top of, I think, I mentioned this last time, Chair, that for instance, most of our plasterboard comes from the EU and had been affected by Covid. So the production of plasterboard had slowed down, which obviously means that housing developments take longer. And again, there's no sign of this yet, Chair, but there is an expectation in the industry that some of the European workers who've traditionally worked in our construction sector may be making choices to go back home. And, and, you know, back to their country of origin, given the, given Brexit and the impact that might have on them as individuals. We won't expect to see any major disruption yet, but it might play out over a longer period of time. And I'll shut up there for any questions.
Okay, Darren, I thought councillor Amelia put her hand up?
Actually, Darren just answered one of my questions because I was thinking about potential Brexit impacts caused by immigration, about construction workers from other EU countries. I think you said that there's some concern about ones that are already here. But what about as well people coming from other EU countries? Because I know that they would have previously just been able to come straight come here from any country. These are just had to do, do the registration through the construction industry scheme. But obviously the concern of whether there's immigration routes available to them now. On the one hand, at the same time, I know when I've been looking on, on like property websites, like personally in a personal capacity, I've noticed that there's been some properties coming on the market, so like former HMOs, city centre flats and properties with tenants in situ. I don't know if that's like a normal wastage that happens or is, is that potential early indicators of capital flight? And if, is there being any that you've seen yourself?
Chair, I always like a good question and that was a very good set of questions. I, I, I think in, in terms of, of the, the impact on the construction industry of changes in the workforce, it probably is too early to tell at this point in time what that might look like. And I'm, I'm cautious as well because it's difficult to understand what the impact currently is because Covid is masking some of that impact. Because obviously there are just limitations on, on people movements because of Covid right, right now, rather than just Brexit. But we should probably know, get a clearer picture maybe by August, September this year. But certainly, you know, we've, we've enjoyed freedom of movement for thirty odd, forty odd years. And there will be an impact. It's just impossible to, to say what that is likely to be. But we do know, for instance, and councillor Kushner touched on this, this earlier on, that if you look at the, the renewal schemes, the, the green home scheme that government's driving at present, our understanding is, isn't just the lack of, of registered providers that are causing an issue. The construction industry as a whole in the UK is just really, really busy at present and it's almost at max capacity. So we're hearing lots of stories of people trying to get home renovations done and having to wait six, eight, nine months before there's any capacity in the local sector. That's not just here, that's, that's across the country. So there are some, some real challenges. I, I think in terms of, of former HMOs, what we're, we're probably seeing at present is a bit of a knee jerk to the fact that the, the student market is just not there right now. And there's no clarity about when that student market might come back and how stable that student market might be. And it's not just our domestic student market, but it's also overseas students as well. And I, I think there are a number of, of HMO owners who have always operated at quite tight financial margins. And now that they're seeing that, that market go, they're eager to dispose of, of property. And so it's one of the things to, to, to keep in mind if, if twelve months from now, we're, we're sat around this, this virtual table. Hopefully we won't, we'll be around a proper tape, having the conversation about the success of, of Article Four and the success of new planning policy. One of the things we'll also have to think about is to what extent has the market changed? And that might have also driven out some HMO activity as well. But that is, is, is likely to, to, to be an issue in the HMO market. Particularly when even you go back as far as twenty fifteen, the last time that we did a, a real review of students' accommodation in the city. Even then, a lot of the smaller landlords were talking about the power that students had and that they need to constantly evolve to quite a demanding student market. Given that the, just the amount of money that students have to pay for rent at present. So I, I, I think that's probably what you're seeing, councillor.
Thank you, Chair, once again. And thank you, Darren, for that little bit of insight, although, as you said, it was just the, the same as three months ago. But nevertheless, thank you for coming and giving us that presentation. So I have three questions. One is with regards to evictions. You talked about evictions and I'd like to hear more about what are we anticipating in terms of the numbers? And how or what have we got in place to make sure that we react? And we have the capacity and capability to react to, to them. The second one is in relation to property pool plus pausing. The impact on the mental health of individuals who are in a overcrowded houses and especially now where they'll probably feel it a lot more, especially those families with children in the house where at least out of Covid, they'll be in school, they won't feel that pressure. What's the solution? What are we doing there? And, and what can the property pool plus do to kind of try to address that? Because at the end of the day, it'll be two issues. It'll be the, once we get out of this, it'll be the mental health on top of that. And also the overcrowded still won't be solved. So what are we doing? What can we do to be able to address them in the current period? The third one is about the, you mentioned disposal of HMOs by developers because of short margins. Do we as a council have any kind of plans in place to be able to move in? To, especially in wards where it had affected negatively, to be able to go in and acquire them? What is the feasibility of, of doing that? Is it something that we can do or is it just a pie in the sky?
Chair, you know, I said before, I liked good questions. I'm being spoilt tonight, I think. There, there's a, there's a range of really good challenging questions there. I, I think in, in terms of the levels of evictions, I, I wouldn't want to predict. Because it, it is a complete unknown. And I, and I do remember all the way back in two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven, having a similar conversation and saying something like, well, this could get really, really bad really, really quickly. And it, and it didn't. The, the eviction rates actually remained really, really stable in the city. So I'm, I'm kind of suggesting there's a potential risk there rather than something that, that, that might crystallise. If, if it does crystallise, it'll be colleagues in housing options will be on the front line of, of this. And I know they work really, really hard and are really, really good service. And, you know, it's, it's one of those things where you only ever hear about the one case that they haven't been able to help and not the ninety nine cases that they, they did. It would be, be my view. But we've got a really good team there and the work that we're doing at present to actually move on our existing group of homelessness, homeless people will just give us some capacity should that spike happen in the future, if, if that makes sense. The, the, picking up on, I think, the point about what can we do about HMOs or property that might become vulnerable in terms of HMOs? It is one of the things that we're looking at and, and thinking, what, what can we do? What are the legitimate solutions that are open to us? And it, it's part of, I think, this, this evolving neighbourhood pilot approach, which I think councillor Kadia will be familiar with. Because it's, he's, he's been the guinea pig in, in Picton. What can we do in those neighbourhoods? What powers do we have? But wanting to be really cautious about the right sort of, of solution. Because there, there's, there's a bit of me as a great lover of, of council housing and social housing that would just say, go in, buy it up, turn it into a council house. But that not, might not be the right solution for that street or that neighbourhood. Particularly if you've already got quite a lot of density of social housing in that, that area. And it comes back to a point that councillor Kushner made before in terms of wanting balanced communities. Where you've got a proper mix of social housing, privately owned housing, in, in some cases privately rented housing to the right type and, and to the right quality. So there, there might be a range of solutions that we need to look at, but trying to be more interventionist in, in, in those kind of neighbourhoods, I think is something that we, we need to, to think about how we, we manage that. And sorry councillor Kadia, what was your second question?
It's in relation to property pool plus pausing, the impact it has mental health.
Yeah, sorry, that, that was the one that actually got me most excited and brought a smile to my face. Does that make me sound really sad? I, I think there's, there's, there is a, a, a real fundamental problem. Committee will have heard me say this before. The fundamental problem that we have is that we do not have the, the right mix and number of social housing in the city. And it's a real issue for us. So we have a real lack of one bedroom social housing properties. And we have a real lack of four plus social housing properties. And, and broadly, if you want a three bedroom social house in the city and aren't that choosy about where you live, it will not take you long to get that property, as long as you bid on a regular basis. Where we have issues with that, those larger number of dwellings, the bedroom dwellings and the, the one bedroom stock. And to some extent, the one bedroom stock issue is driven by the bedroom tax as much as anything else. Now, I know there was a conversation in committee before about, about two bedroom bungalows. And, and obviously, I think we'd, we'd all aspire to be able to give people extra bedrooms, but that, the bedroom tax in place, that will, will come at a price. So the, the reason why I brought a smile to my face when I asked the question, councillor, is, is because that the, the real challenge is right now, we're focused on homelessness. And that's the right thing to do because that's the group that have been most immediately impacted by Covid. But you're right, we cannot forget those other groups who have equal genuine social housing needs. And that might be people who are overcrowded, that might be elderly people who are in property that no longer suits their needs and they've got real disability issues. It could be people fleeing domestic violence. It could be a whole host of, 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 of people who've got those complex needs. And the committee are aware, there's a sub regional review currently taking place of a property pool. And hopefully what comes from that will be a better system that'd be quicker at meeting people's needs. But it, it won't get us away from the fundamental issue that we have, that we just have not got as a city or for that matter as a city region, enough larger social housing and enough smaller social housing. The local plan will help us address some of that because there's some targets in there. What we do with our own land and assets will help address some of that. But it, it, there is always going to be a point where there will be families whose needs we will struggle to, to meet. And I, I probably told committee this story before, but earlier last year, walking past one of my team who was patiently explaining to a lady on the phone, the, the reason why we couldn't get her a bungalow in the, the area that she wanted wasn't because we were being difficult, but because there were no bungalows in that neighbourhood. And, 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 and the, the challenge that we have all the time is that people have housing needs, but they also have housing aspirations. And, and people are right to want to live where they want to live and they have lots of reasons for that. But obviously that limits choice and makes finding the home that they want more difficult. And I'm conscious I've prattled on for quite a while there, but I hope that's helpful, councillor.
Okay, thanks Darren. And councillor Barry Kushner, you, you've got your hand up. Do you want to come in on this?
Yeah, just, so, yeah, just very briefly, I think.
Yeah, just so, yeah, just very briefly, I think the problem, property pool is a problem. It doesn't work. It's not working right. And part of the problem underlying, the underlying issue is there's not enough housing and the type of housing is clearly a problem. But it's also a problem, you know, in terms of meeting some of the needs that we're going to have in our communities. If we build extra care facility, new houses, then we've got to be able to do that outside of any property pool allocation. Because we've got to target the people that are happy to move from a three bedded property, for example, and they're elderly into, you know, a one bed extra care facility or two bed if that's what they want. So we've got to, there's got to be, I know there's a review of property pool through the combined authority. But we've got to have a proper, serious look at it and also, but also in terms of, you know, we've just got to build more houses.
Okay Barry, yeah, build more houses, yeah. I think we all agree with that. I can't see anybody else's hands up. So like, can I just thank Darren for the report and ask members to note the information? That agreed? Can we move on then to agenda item six, housing types and different models? And again, this is Darren.
You'll be sick of the sound of my voice, Chair. I don't intend to go through the report in any detail. The report's here because I think committee requested it last time. It's largely for information report. It just touches, I think, on some of the key issues in the housing market. What types of house types we've got, how the housing market largely works. But I also thought it might be useful to just put some stuff in there around how housing is broadly financed.
Okay, thanks Darren. I've got councillor Amelia, you've got your hand up?
Yeah, thank you Darren. It's a brilliant report. And you mentioned that outside the planning framework, there's no clear definition of what is affordable housing. I think it would be helpful to look at some of the types of affordable homes to buy in more depth. And I know at the last meeting, Chair, you mentioned our existing scrutiny panel and that this focused on RSLs. And I would recommend that we could include the affordable housing types such as shared ownership. To include them in the scrutiny panel to assess like the risks and opportunities for both providers and residents. And I've just got a couple of questions and they relate to the scrutiny panel itself. And I was wondering if, what are the aims and scope of the scrutiny panel? When will the draft terms of reference be brought to this committee for us to agree? And if we haven't already, will we be identifying panel members at the same time? Because I think also it would be really good if we could get cross party involvement. So if we could potentially extend the invitation to all councillors rather than just us on this committee, please.
In terms of the panel, I mean, they've already set the panel up. In terms of references being agreed, obviously we need to widen that. We'd have to obviously bring that back. We did invite members of this committee to join the panel. I don't think they had more than two members in the indicative, I think. I mean, we can check that again. But I'm happy to widen the scope of the scrutiny panel as you suggest. I don't know what other members feel. Has any other members? I know Barry's got his hand up. Barry?
Chair, thanks. I was just going to respond back to the affordable housing. There is a definition of affordable rent. It's eighty, and Darren will correct me if I'm wrong here, but say up to eighty percent of market rent. So up to eighty percent of market rent. So that can go from social rent up to those levels. And I think, I think when we talk about affordable housing and affordable rent, we need to be clear. I think what you're getting at, and I think you're right, is we need to be clear about what rent we're talking about. So I think when, I think when, I think I'd be more comfortable talking about council social rent when we know exactly what that is. And we're talking about, you know, rent that's not quite the market rent, but is at the higher end when we're not. So I think, but I think we need to, so I think it's useful to, the affordable, affordable thing, affordable rent is something that the Tories have brought in, haven't they? As a term that kind of doesn't, doesn't have to, is a way of not talking about social rent really. But I think that we need to be a bit more, we need to define a bit more our terms when we're just, we're talking about rent.
Okay Barry, I think I understand that affordable rent is eighty percent of the market rents, isn't it? I mean, that's what they normally say, but it's a grey area, isn't it, you know?
It's up to.
Social rent, social rent is about fifty percent, is it, as I understand it? Darren, would you like to come back on that?
Yeah, Chair, if I can help, but possibly just confuse things further. Social rent is normally fifty to sixty percent of market rent. But actually, there's a formula that drives social rent. And it's set through a formulaic process based upon a range of things, including local income and local rent levels. Unfortunately, those were figures that were set about twenty years ago and have never really been updated particularly well since. So even the formula behind social rent could do with a national overhaul. But it still does produce a model that's about fifty to sixty percent of market. But to do that, you need subsidy. And that's always the challenge, that if there isn't a housing market subsidy, which has to come from government or through creative ways of bringing in extra income, then you cannot deliver social housing. Market rent, sorry, affordable rent is about eighty percent. And people say up to eighty percent. But you see, you don't see very many models where it isn't eighty percent. That's the reality of the situation, I think, nationally. But again, that's because you need subsidy to be able to deliver an affordable housing, an affordable rented model. The confusing term is that affordable rent isn't actually linked to the concept of affordable housing. They are separate things. Affordable housing has become quite a generic term to mean anything that isn't market housing. And I think committee have touched on this before, about the frustration that things are banched as affordable. But actually, some people cannot afford them. But that's, I think, an inherent problem in our housing market. That probably goes back to nineteen seventy eight and the kind of the end of great council house building. And a move from an economy where most people rented into an economy where most people either own or aspire to own. And that's changed the balance of how our housing market works. So, and of course, you know, what's affordable in London is very different to what's affordable in Liverpool. And that's, I think, that if the UK could get its head around a single model of what we mean by affordability. And actually could understand that people's ability to pay changes over time. And I think I touched on this in the report, Chair, that we do have genuine issues at some levels. Where there are people in social housing paying fifty to sixty percent of the market rent. But who actually could afford to pay significantly more. But because once you're in social housing, you're in social housing. And so the national model need to look at, but no government's really done that for probably fifteen, sixteen years.
Yeah, thanks for that Darren. Councillor Cadia?
Yeah, Chair, again, once again, thank you Darren for another very detailed report there. I don't know if we've had this in the committee before or not, but do we know the kind of percentages of all these different tenures and mix in Liverpool? And how can they, and is there a way of kind of influencing and increasing or decreasing these tenures in terms of our policies, procedures having in place? And maybe looking at the impact, if one goes up, what's the impact? Does it have a knock on effect? So I'm not sure if that's being done or if there is anything like that. I think that would be just kind of the cherry on the top of that kind of report.
Chair, there's a whole group of work on that in the housing strategy. And we intend to bring that to committee that talks through some of those issues. It's also embedded in the draft local plan in terms of where our housing need is. And broadly, what we think our current housing mix is. I say broadly because obviously the housing market changes all the time. And, you know, we don't know every HMO that's in the city. So it may be that there's groups of three bedroom houses that we think are three bedroom houses that are now five bedroom HMOs. But we won't necessarily know that. But we do have broad indications of those issues of mix. And I think I've said this committee before, but for me, one of the key issues is that, and please don't hold me to these figures because I'm going on memory, which is always a bad thing to do. But there's about forty percent of our households in this city who are one person households. But about twenty percent of our housing stock is one bedroom. So there's a real mismatch overall, not just in social housing. And that probably wouldn't matter so much if it weren't for things like the bedroom tax.
Okay. Councillor Amelia, do you want to come back in on that?
Yeah, it was just on the same point. Your question related to affordable homes to buy, not affordable homes to rent. And I don't, did you say that we'd had the terms of reference? Because I don't know if I missed a few, missed a meeting or two because last year I was off sick because I had appendicitis. So I don't know if I've missed anything.
We did, I mean, Darren can correct me if I'm wrong, but we did, we did circulate the terms of reference to the scrutiny panel, didn't we?
I certainly remember drafting something, Chair, so I'm fairly sure it must have gone round.
Yes. I mean, we can recirculate that and ask members of this committee. I mean, I don't know if we should widen it to any, any air member. I think, you know, we have a role to do on the housing committee. And that scrutiny panel can actually, you know, sort of invite people along and interview people in relation to, you know, the issues that they need to discuss. So I think if we, if we recirculate the terms of reference to scrutiny panel, it hasn't met yet. And we can look at maybe widening the scope of that. And invite other members of this committee to take part in it. I think that would be the way forward, to be honest. Is that okay?
Is it okay? Just come back to your chair, please. And I was just thinking, so my reasoning for thinking that we could extend it is because obviously on this committee, we've not got representation from all the political parties. So I was thinking that obviously the best practice for scrutiny, when it's scrutiny panels, is to have as much participation as possible.
We do have, we do have opposition parties on this.
Yeah, yeah, I know. It's just that we don't have all of them.
And Liverpool, you know, I mean, obviously, they'd be welcome to join the scrutiny panel if they wish to.
And as well, do we have any dates ahead for the scrutiny panel or is that still being agreed?
Chair, if I could just come in, the scrutiny panel was actually set up on the, one of the last meetings last year. And then the final meeting, we had to cancel all select committees due to lockdown. So it was reestablished for this year, but then again, we haven't had a chance to to set up the panels due to officers having other work to do. But the terms of reference have been, have been approved by this committee.
Okay, I've got councillor Lake, do you like to come in on this?
Yeah, only, yeah, thank you Chair. Only to say that I seem to recall at some distant meeting that there was a scrutiny panel set up. And I think, if I'm thinking it was the right one, I was on it in answer to councillor Amelia's point about opposition members, there was, there was one scrutiny panel formed. And I think it was myself and councillor Nib and councillor Joanne Kushner were on it. But I never heard any more about that one, whatever that was. So in answer to councillor Amelia's question, there is opposition involvement and I would like to be involved again, I suppose is the point.
Well, my recommendation would be that we recirculate the terms of reference to members of this committee. And reestablish it really and see if we can move it forward. Obviously, we know that there's a tremendous amount of work going on with council and obviously with what's going on, you know, in relation to the council et cetera. So we'll try and progress it as best we can. But the first thing to do is recirculate the terms of reference and then see if we want to sort of widen it for some of the issues that councillor Amelia has raised. Is that agreed? Okay. Well, can we, can we thank Darren again, yes again, for his report and note the report? Is that agreed? Yeah, okay. We're going on now to item seven, which is a motion, End Our Cladon and EWS one by councillor Alan Torme. I understand that he can't attend the meeting tonight. Therefore, could I ask councillor Barbara Mayes to move the motion standing in councillor Torme's name?
Thank you Chair. Yes, I'd like to move the motion standing in his name. And I can speak on it, but I believe there's amendment.
Yes, yes. I would like to move an amendment, copies which have been circulated by the committee secretary in advance of the meeting. Is the amendment sufficient?
Yes Chair, second the amendment.
Seconded, right, okay.
I mean, basically, I mean, the reason for the amendments, I mean, I think we've seen over the last few days, I mean, you know, and it's been a very, I think a very, I think Barry touched on it earlier on. Some of the stories that are coming out in relation to people who are living in these high rise flats. And the worry whether the, you know, they can go to sleep at night and they've got tremendous financial difficulties, some facing bankruptcy. And there seems to be reluctance of the government, I would say, you know, to move this forward. And so the amendment really is sort of, sort of a national task force to identify the buildings that got to this. And really a date, you know, when all these issues would be resolved, which is, I think it's twenty twenty two. You can't, we can't carry on with what's going on. I mean, and some of the heartbreaking stories that were fair, I think it's really, it's really sad. And as a country, you know, three and a half years on from that terrible rainfall disaster when seventy two people lost their lives in such terrible circumstances, I mean, why it's dragged on this long? I mean, it's really unexplainable really. And the idea behind the motion, this is not really party political, it's about keeping the pressure on, on the government. And I know today, I think it was, Prime Minister's questioned. The Prime Minister was questioned again by the leader of the opposition. You know, and he says, oh, we're going to bring something forward, but we've got to make sure that the pressure is kept on. Hence the reason for the amendment. And I do hope that members would support that. If anyone would like to speak on the amendment, could you just shout? I've got councillor Barry Kushner and councillor Barbara Mayes.
Thanks Chair, sorry to keep coming in here, but I think, I think, I would say, it's not for, I'm not on the committee, it's not for me to vote on. But what I would say is that the, you know, honestly, great that the Liberal, you know, that I think that the support that leaseholders need should spread far and wide and certainly should be across, you know, across party. We had a motion about this, I think it was in the October or November meeting. But I think the motion kind of misses the point. I think it misses the point about where leaseholders are actually at at the moment. And of course, the EWS is an issue, but the reason why they can't sell the properties is that, is the properties are valueless because they're not safe. And they're not safe until they've been remediated. So some, some tenants are able to try and make some claims under warrant. May just be under warranty, there's one or two blocks in the city that are that. God knows how long that will take for them to take that forward, but they can apply for the building safety fund in the meantime and reimburse it if they get the money. But that's the other issue, it's just the increase in insurance costs to the, going up by, you know, in some case ten times more that they're having to pay because of the risks they're carrying, the interim measures for waking watch and for temporary alarm systems. We were allocated half a million pounds this week to, that we're going to, can we target? I think there's probably about sixteen or seventeen blocks that would be eligible for it. And that's for temporary alarm systems while they put their financing. I'm not sure that's enough. You know, because the building safety fund, which is for remediation, is one billion pounds. The select committee for the Homes and Community Local Government Select Committee estimates that we need, it needs to be fifteen billion pounds. So, and the process that it takes is the long, so even the ones that submitted applications last June, last July are still going through assessment procedures now and they will not get a decision, they don't think, until June this year. So the remediation won't start even until So the remediation won't start even until after that. So it, it's, it's just, and then there's the whole issue of blocks that are under eighteen, that are under eighteen meters. And those poor leaseholders have got absolutely no protection whatsoever. And what I'm understanding is that the government solution to this is going to be to wish them all with loans. The last thing I think leaseholders need is more debt. They just need it being paid. The only, well, people, the organisation that can pay for it in the main is the government and that's what they should do. And the other thing with the motion that I take exception to is it completely ignores the work that our ward councillors have been doing, particularly in Riverside and Central Ward in support of, in support of leaseholders. And they've been doing that for months and months and months. And also, you know, and, and I've actually been doing quite, I've had several meetings with different leaseholder groups. We work already with the Liverpool Cladiators. We met on Friday with the MPs to develop a campaign, a strategy to publicise these issues at all sorts of different levels, including with the National Housing Federation. But that, with, with Liverpool Cladiators providing us examples that we can take forward. So I, I, I can't vote on this, but my, I think the motion as amended is much more appropriate and much more fitting to the kind of support that is required by leaseholders and the support's been provided by leaseholders. And, and this letter that's gone to the housing minister, you know, you can't see it because it's blurred, this housing minister to date for the, to fully adopt all the recommendations of the, of the Homes and Communities Local Government Select Committee that were proposed last year. Thanks, Chair.
Thanks, Barry. Councillor Mace, would you like to comment just then?
Uh, yeah, yes, please, Chair. On instructions from Alan, unfortunately, he's not been able to get time off work tonight. He doesn't agree, disagree with the suggestions that you've made in your amendment, Chair. But he was rather hoping that the, the whole motion would be a cross-party one, which is why he hasn't mentioned any political parties whatsoever in his original motion. And so it's rather a shame, it would have been nice to have had a completely cross-party motion going from the council. And it, and also in, in your amendment, you also mentioned setting up talks to, 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 to check the at-risk housing, which virtually means checking all housing. But councillor Storey says he's seen a comment from the chief executive saying that the council doesn't have the resources to, to do that undertaking on, on, on any houses post twenty-ten. So I, I really hope you might reconsider and try and make the, the motion a truly cross-party one that we can all agree on. As I say, he, you know, neither he nor I or any of our party have any, any disagreements with what you've mentioned in, in the, in your amendment. It's just a question of making it, taking out the political comments and making it a truly cross-party one, which I think would be stronger for the city.
Chair, apologies to interrupt, I just, there's a, there's a point of information here that if you, the, the local authority has the statutory responsibility to make sure to get to, for checking blocks that have got aluminium cladding. They've all been done. Over and above that, the local authority doesn't have a responsibility for them. They, they rest with the, with the, with the fire service. We work with the fire service. I've got a spreadsheet, a list of all the, all the, the high-rise blocks that are affected with where they're up to in terms of their building safety assessment and then the plans that have been taken after that. It's the, the fire service have got an issue with resources as well, by the way. But we work very closely with them on all of these blocks already.
Councillor there, and then councillor Amelia.
Thanks, Chair. Yeah, I, I think I would be more inclined to vote for the amendment because it has a bit more kind of meat on it. It, it, it actually adds a bit more than the original motion. In terms of the government, we all know, you know, they're happy to spend billions and millions of pound on wasted initiatives. But when it comes to addressing their own failures of systems that they have, have introduced, then that's when they start shying away from. And I totally agree with councillor Barry Kushner when he said, you know, the last thing that any leaseholder would want is more debt. You know, they're already at a breaking point with all these extra debt and some of them, you know, really ridiculous service charges that they have to pay already. To add burden, that extra burden on it would definitely send a lot of them into the red and, and probably financial ruin. So, no, I think, you know, I would love it to be a cross-party motion and it'd be a, a good thing to have. But I, I really support the amendment and thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Amelia, Amelia?
Yeah, I'm obviously I'm supporting the amendment, but I just wanted to sort of like acknowledge the other side of it. And thank you, thank you for your contribution, Barbara. And obviously thank you to Alan himself for bringing it to the committee. I think if we'd had something that had gone to full council and had been sent to all the parties, then I'm sure we would have all agreed across party. And I think it is a good intention generally. But obviously I'm supporting the amendment because of obviously the extra stuff that's in it as well. But obviously appreciate the sentiments.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. I, I, I just wanted to speak to say that, you know, we all, we all agree with the, with, with the sentiments of the motion. We all know the implications for the people involved. I, I do agree that the amendment does add to the original motion. But I've got to say that I support councillor Mace in, in wishing that it was a cross-party thing. Because I, I do think one or two lines in there, Chair, are overtly political for what was not intended to be a political motion.
Chair, you're on mute.
I don't know, I could put myself on mute really, but sorry about that. No, I mean, obviously I take on board what, what you've, councillor Mace and yourself have said. But I think the reason behind this amendment really is because of the situation we find ourselves in. And we're not trying to be party political on this. It's just that the, the Labour Party, obviously, is the official opposition and it's put forward, even though it was only a symbolic vote, wasn't it? It was a symbolic vote to put pressure on the government. And we know that the bill that's going to Parliament at the moment has gone to the House Lords and it will come back from the House Lords to Parliament. And we'll move, and the opposition will move an amendment if it's not, if it's not changed. And that will be a time, you know, obviously, when all the political parties, hopefully even some of the Conservative MPs would support. So I'm not minded to change the amendment. So I'm going to move that the amendment has found be voted on. So are there any, are there any members against or wish to abstain on the amendment? If so, please raise your hand or indicate visually on the screen so that your name and vote can be recorded. So we have councillor Mace and councillor Lake in opposition. On that basis, is the amendment approved? Unless, sorry about that. Of the remaining members of the committee, unless a member expressly indicates otherwise, then your vote will be recorded in favour of the amendment. Does everybody understand that? So if nobody's put their dissent to that, it will be recorded as voting for the amendment. Does everybody understand that? Yeah? On that basis, I can't see anybody indicating that they're opposed to that. So on that basis, the amendment is approved and becomes the substantive motion. We'll go on now, I know this is a bit complicated. Can we go on to vote on the substantive motion? And for those members of the committee who wish to dissent or abstain in relation to the substantive motion, please raise your hand or indicate visually on the screen that your name and vote can be recorded. I can't see anybody with the, the hands up.
Chair, can I just ask then, is everybody in favour? Yeah, thank you.
So that is unanimous that the substantive motion is approved unanimously. Are we agreed? Yeah? Well, on that basis, the substantive motion is approved and agreed accordingly. Well, thank you very much for obviously the support, even though that you disagree with some elements of it. But I think we all, we're all speaking off the same sort of hymn sheet, I hope, you know? We all believe that something needs to be done as quickly as possible and sort of, and what's going on and, you know, give people peace of mind, basically. Okay. The last item, oh, not the last item. Item eight is the draft annual report, which is on the page twenty-six. Do members have any comments or questions on the annual report? I can't see anybody's hand up. Oh? No? I mean, the only thing I'd say on that is that obviously we are looking to have a special housing select committee, which we would like to invite all members of the city council on the housing strategy. And that will be done, you know, in the near future. Yeah, so can I move that the report submitted for the inclusion into the annual scrutiny report? Is that agreed? Is that agreed? Yeah, okay. Item eight, can I advise members that all public questions have been received? However, that received a question from councillor Tom Logan, which have been circulated to all members of the committee together with responses and will be appended to the published minutes. Well, my thanks to all the members of the committee for your engagements and comments at tonight's meeting. And thank you all who have reviewed and viewed this evening's proceedings online. And the meeting is now concluded. So, I mean, I'm trying to read this off my phone, but I mean, basically, thank you all for attending and especially members of the public who've stayed online and obviously listened to what's gone on. So thank you all for attending and.